Okay, can I have a motion to interject into regular section?
I make the motion to interject back into regular section.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Odeos. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Guedel. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero.
And the average score for the evaluations was a fifty-nine point six 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 repeating, which averaged out to a five for the city.
Out of a possible ten.
I wanted to first take an opportunity to, take the opportunity to thank you for actually letting me be the City Manager and have an opportunity to serve the City of Florisville for the last year. I have begun to learn a great deal about the city and about its history and dedication of our residents, as you can see, actually during this long meeting, and I want to thank them personally for being out there and supporting me. I have, um, I'm gonna take the opportunity to say that I am optimistic as to what the future holds for the City of Florisville, a great city that's poised for the gateway of the Eagle Ford sale. And I want to make sure that we don't miss the opportunities that are here for us and that we take full advantage of them. You have, as I said to you previously, you have my summer at Montfort for the last quarter, but we want to have some highlights. Road conditions, we prepared for the Thames Streets, that we should be able to take care of in 2015. Staff members are being properly trained and cross-trained. Equipment purchase, we've developed a training program, and we're hoping to complete the first phase of our street maintenance plan. Drinking water has been in the news recently, so we passed our last meeting an engineering water model study that we're hoping that we can get a hold of our capacity for the city, so we can identify some of our current conditions, develop a plan based on the recommendations for our water system, as well as address the well needed maintenance that we have regarding these water wells, which is really important. Our wastewater system, the sewer model is complete. We are probably going to move forward with the USDA grant application, and you'll have a report on that from December eleventh. We need to investigate all of our funding mechanisms that we have. The USDA grant is a loan for forty years, but these are the funding mechanisms we can look at. We need to review the engineering reports and evaluate all of our options, and I'm hoping to lead you forward on that. We need to adopt a plan that recommends using some of our aging infrastructure to make those improvements. As you know, most infrastructure has been ignored because it's people's ground, and so what we're hoping to do is to address all those issues going forward. Our parks program, I've worked very hard to collaborate with the Parks Foundation, and we should be having a plan going forward for park improvements. We're hoping to foster a relationship between our local community groups and our kind of government in creating a park plan. We're seeking grants and funding to facilitate with CERA, CDBG, and other agencies, and we did highlight this year our historical hike and bike trail. We're telling them personally we're happy that we were able to be one of the first signature cities for the city, for the whole state, and we definitely are taking the leadership when we beat San Antonio and Los Angeles to that. Zoning is very important. Our land use plan was completed with obligations for the new for annexation. We need to codify some of our existing ordinances, as well as implement some of the new ordinances regarding fence and signage and those type of things. A court enforcement program has started. We were structuring permits in reference to Inspector Services Department, establishing a need for ordinances, ordinances that in permits may be available online, so people can do things more sophisticated. It's not a hitting this and catching up with someone, they're there for the public to see. I'm hoping to move forward with maintenance and upgrading of all of our city facilities. Economic development, it's all about the money. It always comes down to economic development, so we've been working very hard with EDC. Mr. Baker and I work a team together, he actually has a meeting today, to create a marketing plan for the city, so that Florisville can market the wonderful dominance that they have, from the community center, the golf course, and all kinds of amenities that would foster tourism, which is a big dollar money. City beautification programs will enhance the city's appearance, working with the county to clean up vacant lots, working with residents to remove the burden of vehicles and other things that don't make our cities look all beautiful. And the goal of obtaining status of a scenic city for the City of Florisville is a goal that I hope that we can reach in the next two to three years, so that we can become a landmark for the state of Texas. I thank you for your time, and I thank the community for their support, and that's the end of my report.
Do you want to give your update on that water well at this time?
Actually, Andrew Mariantis is here, he can share a report for you in reference to that.
Okay, let us continue.
I, I think you're doing a commendable job. I think you're doing very great, I think you're an asset to the, to the City of Florisville. The city is very, should be very honored to have someone of your stature in this position. Just like, you know, anything else, you're going to go for everything, and, but I do believe that you're doing a great job for the City of Florisville. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's been a pleasure working for the City of Florisville.
Do we give our scores, or our personal scores, or?
That's up to you, it's at your discretion if you would like to do so or not.
I, I gave you, gave you a score of an eight.
I too agree with the individual that stood up and spoke on your behalf, because I feel that you are doing a good job, and they're taking notice of it. I appreciate your quick answers when I call you or request something, but you get back to me pretty quickly. The only thing that I would say that might need improvement is with, there's still a little squabbling between supervisors, two in particular that I know of, so if we could take care of that, I believe that that would help. Also, I think, because I'm here every Monday, you know, and I walk around, even out in the street, for my coffee, and I talk to individuals out in the street, or employees sometimes that I come across, and I think what you might also do better at is when you, and I don't know what this is, the right term, reprimand somebody, that you don't do it in front of other employees, that you take them aside and reprimand them, or tell them whatever you need to do, because they feel what you're talking down to them, so that's an area that I feel could use some improvement. But again, I appreciate everything you've done for the, for the public when they request, so again, I thank you for your, for your hard work.
Thank you, thank you so much. Andrea, you and I might not always see eye to eye, we'll always work out our issues. You have a lot of complaints, I don't expect you to accomplish it all in one year. We have different problems that come up every day, and every single one of them costs us money, and we have to look for many. Y'all are full of money and budget. I am disappointed in the new phone system and the internet system that we're working on with right now. I just found out that we bought telephones that we really didn't need to buy, I don't know what the cost of that was, we could have kept our old phone, maybe we'd have still had phone service, because it keeps going up and down, up and down, I know that's been an issue, but I also feel that we should hold those phone companies accountable for coming in and taking care of those issues. I don't think it's the controller's job to do it, or the clerk and the P D to do it. If we're paying for a service, they should back their service, so it might be something that we can hold our eyes accountable for, okay? You have great community outreach, I've seen it, we both have shared, and gone to a lot of events, and we'll continue doing that. I know that you support a lot of my projects, I believe in beautifying the city, working with the Parks Department, trying to get our parks going. Recently, I started walking at the park, and now I know what everybody talks about at Beacon Park. I haven't been able to do it lately because it's been cold and I've had a cold, but I'll get back out there. And you would be amazed to see how many people are out there at six o'clock in the morning. I'm amazed to see myself out there at seven, but, you know, I really encourage everyone. I have accepted a mayor's challenge with H E B that starts in January, and I hope that a lot of you will join us in doing more health awareness for ourselves. You know, you don't know until you get out there and do it, how good it is for you. So I, I think that we still have a lot to do, but with your department heads that you count on, your meetings that you have with them, you know, I know we are, we're working with the paving, you know, I haven't gone to see the street, it's been raining, but I know that they're trying, and we're trying to get training for them, so you're doing a lot for them, okay? That's what I have. Thank you.
H T. Anyway, this is my third review of yours, and I'm gonna start off by saying that I was wrong. On that first review I gave you, I wasn't very confident in you leading the city, and I was wrong. You're a great leader for the City of Florisville. If you remember why I called you on Boss's Day, I asked you how many people you guessed, and I said, remember, the less gifts, the better job you're doing. You're not supposed to get a lot of gifts on Boss's Day. But keep up the good work, I mean, you've made a strong presence in our community, you're here at all our meetings, you know, Parks Foundation, EDC, you're working with them. Anytime I call you, you know, you always call me back or text me, you know, you get my humor, not a lot of people do, but you do, so that's good, so keep up the good work, and I'll do work with you.
Thank you.
And I gave you a score of a ninety.
Your, your humor is a little wicked, so, but thank you, thank you.
Well, I'm gonna go very quietly, but I want to say that the only problem that I've seen over and over is that you don't communicate, in my opinion, like I said, they might say different, but when you have it for somebody, just like a holiday week, through that paper because still, I don't know if you see it, but the same thing you did to me a couple of meetings ago, too. And I'm not here, I'm just here to say that, that when you talk to the employee, I told you the first day you came to the, the job, I told you, look for the persons that can help you with your job easy, and you didn't follow that, that because you wouldn't talk to the city secretary, colleague, with chair, you wouldn't talk to a bunch of people, and I don't think you reached out. The same thing, you know, the, the party we had at the city park, we can see how, how united the city employees are. With the show up that was there, there was maybe twenty people, when we have, I don't know, about seventy people in the city, plus their spouses and their family. You know, I want you to work a little harder to reach out to the employees, and I walked in today, you know, I can easily say hi to you, but to say hi, Councilman, is that, I guess if you're friends with someone, you're okay waving at them or anything, but if you're mad at them, and I think, you know, since you go to church, you should kind of be more, you know, love the enemy, because the Bible also says love, right? So say, yeah, you ain't anybody, man, or I'm like, yeah, you like to do it, you know, that's what you're lacking a little bit. But I'm gonna leave, I'm gonna wish you the best, I hope things, I mean, it looks like things are getting in order, like things are doing, getting better, but that was my only downfall, I would call you, very, very rare I would call you, but the tenth time that I call you, and I have them on my phone, never received, how can I help you, Councilman? Wouldn't call me the next day, or call me the next day, oh, I missed your call. I don't see how people are texting there and doing all kinds of things, and don't see a phone call, and that was kind of my, but I guess if I was on your bad side, you weren't gonna, but that's fine, you know, I'm gonna leave it at that, but I wish you the best, I wish the council the best, the mayor, the City of Florisville, I tried my best, it's hard to, to, you know, be outnumbered at the time, but as long as I go with my heart, I know that I have satisfied a lot of people in Florisville, but wish you the best, thank you.
Mrs. Turner, I've been criticized for reading my script, but I've repaired, I researched and repaired. I've been criticized for saying negative things in public, but it's not something that I desire, it's something that you asked for, so I want to make sure everyone understands that you asked for this evaluation in public. Regarding the leadership skills and your management skills, I think it needs improvement, as you've heard from other folks today, and I have experienced recently two examples of that. After all, Florisville citizens, they need to be served in a timely manner. The citizens of the city are the most important asset. They pay your salary with property taxes, and they need to be served in a timely manner to avoid inefficient use of employee and council resources. They pay the taxes, and secondly, it is our responsibility to treat them with respect and come to their aid when needed, giving them poorly rated services unacceptable. Mrs. Turner, the citizens of the city pay your salary, and they deserve better. An example was the inspection for property located at five sixty-six on Fourth Street, owned by Anthony Silva, afforded me the opportunity to assist him and got involved because the City Manager was not able to handle requests in a timely manner. The customer was having three new mobile homes delivered on Saturday, October the eleventh, two thousand fourteen, the day of the peanut festival, to replace three older mobile homes. The customer had already complied with the city's request to clean up the debris, with the exception of old mattresses that tenants had dumped, thinking the city was going to pick them up. Mr. Silva picked them up himself. The customer called Mrs. Turner on Wednesday, October the eighth, asking for the inspection, and City Manager's response was that it couldn't be done because the city was closed on Friday, and she didn't have time to do anything. That's when council member, that's me, was asked to get involved. Finally, after much resistance from the City Manager, she met with Mr. Silva and agreed to help the customer with the inspection on Friday, October the tenth. The second example was the inspection for property located on thirteen twelve C Street. You repre, you reprimanded me for interfering with an employee. Since City Hall was closed on Friday, I asked Andrea for her cellphone, so I could call her to see if the inspection had been completed, so the customer could call Phelps, since they were closing at noon on Friday. You called to tell me that I should not be interfering with workers. My reply to you was that if you were kindly on constituents' request, they would not have to call with urgent requests. In other words, Mrs. Turner, if you're doing your job, no one would seek council assistance. The customer paid a hundred and four dollars on Monday, October the sixth, for the inspection. Five days later, no results were found, asking for the inspection, which should have been completed before Saturday, October the eleventh. This, too, was resolved after hearing all the reasons why the inspection could not be completed before Saturday, October the eleventh. Those are two examples, recent examples, where customers do not come first, and again, they pay your salary. Employee relations and leadership. Unwanted employee transfers to departments and positions employees do not want and have not requested. Examples and names of employees are omitted to protect the employees. Attempting to take over responsibilities not under City Manager's jurisdiction, i.e. municipal court. The City Manager requested an employment agreement for the municipal judge. Before council's appointment of the municipal judge, the City Manager directed the City Attorney's Office to create an employment agreement for Judge Joe, Joe Jimenez's signature before he was sworn in. As I recall, this was not one of the directives the council agreed upon. The council voted on appointee. Thursday, September the twenty-fourth, two thousand fourteen, Morones Castillo, Guerrero and Nieto voted yes for the appointment, and Brogadillas voted no. There was no mention of an employment agreement, yet knowing the council gave no directive to an employment agreement, and knowing that the municipal judge reports to the council and not the City Manager, you forged ahead with your own personal agenda. The added expense of City Attorney's time to create the document, the time for some council members' involvement, the mayor, and ultimately the newly appointed judge's involvement, could have been avoided. In addition, the document was sent to the judge for signature. Needless to say, the judge questioned it and asked for advice. We did not allow this to happen, especially since City Attorney's Assistant Christopher Hug had no knowledge that council had not approved the document in question. Regarding communication, written communication has not improved. There was a press release that had ultimate tons of errors, a press release, mind you, coming from the City Manager, and I understand that you created it. It was on the citywide cleanup, and there were also mistakes on the hike and bike trail, this one. I'm embarrassed that we're represented with this kind of information coming from our top city employee. The Facebook item that was mentioned earlier, the Santa Claus, that referred to giving somebody a dictionary for Christmas, and that was the reason I said, give it to Mrs. Involvement in elections. What was your involvement in November fourth, two thousand fourteen city elections? The signs that were hung, that was not the issue, the issue was that you were involved, and this is a no-no according to the employee handbook. City records? Well, I won't discuss that, because that was part of the, one of the executive sessions. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, if it's something, can we give a water well? Sure, I think there will be five B, Plaza Waterwell update.
Are you getting no action?
If, if I'm being, if they ask me to take, just like any other employee following their evaluation, there is a disgust of increasing emphasis to that. There's no discussion of any increase in emphasis to myself, as all employees have received a raise as of today.
And, but during this evaluation, it is at the council's discretion to, to give a, a, a penalty, so that she may request, correct?
The capital, it can result from the evaluation, it's fine.
So we can, we can set a percentage at this time?
Yes.
What do you feel your percentage would be, Mr. Turner, in terms of your, yourself?
I think the same percentage that we discussed earlier about this to other employees and emphasis to your evaluation. The representation goes from anywhere between two and a half to four and a half percent. I would ask a four percent increase.
I'd like to make the motion to, to approve a four percent raise for Miss Turner.
Okay, a motion by Councilman Odeos for a four percentage increase, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Councilman Guedel, all in favor?
No.
Aye.
Okay. You can, you can please.
(applause) Mayor, Council, before you, I've gave you a memo with pictures of what's going on at the Plaza well, we have to, you have to make it, I'm referencing. Can you hear me? Okay. I just gave you a memo with pictures of the rehabilitation of the Plaza well and the progress that we're doing. I'm referencing back to the scope of work from Advanced Waterwell, dated back on twenty twenty-third, uh, twenty fourteen, the nine steps that we were gonna do. I'm glad to report that we have completed six of the nine. We have done the trip and hole push obstruction, the sonar jetting was on the well screen, the agitation and hydraulic acid on the well screens, brush acid into the springs, agitated and air lift, the well screens are moving, send chemical to the waste, which was completed, jetted the accumulated debris that from the sonar jet, the exposure, the debris that, that it left, which we're actually cleaning up now. We're scheduled to have the camera ready by tomorrow to look down through that screen and see how much of it we were able to salvage, and then proceed with the disinfection of the thousand gallons of carbonated solution into the well. If you look at the pictures that I, that I gave you, the first picture is we're getting ready to do the sonar jet. As you can see, they're putting the pipe in, connecting the, the water hose, and that's gonna push the sonar jet down to do the exposure. We actually did that. And on the second, uh, picture, you can see as the pipe is being moved down towards the Then you can see the, you cannot see the exposure, but the pipes are already in place, and the sonar jetting has begun. When that was done, we went ahead and put a screen down to see what kind of debris. This was the risk that we told y'all, that if we didn't pick up any debris, then we were gonna be, it's gonna be a big issue. But I'm glad to report that we have a lot of debris, and you can see it on the, on the floor, and that was creeping clean now throughout this week.
What is that, do you, what does that degree compromise of?
That is the time of accumulation, uh, the sand, the gravel that, that accumulates, the sulfur, the lime, that's in the, in the out front, the time it starts accumulating on the screen and starts curving out the hole, holes where the water goes through, motors to it can come up and be pumped out to the, to the chlorination and then into the ground storage, then eventually goes up to the elevated tower. So that screen was very critical, so those are some of the larger pieces we were able to get. As of today, we have jetted all the way down to a thousand forty feet, so we feel optimistic that, that we're gonna recover a good, a good part of the well, but I cannot tell you that until tomorrow, when, when the camera goes down there and I can see the screen itself. Once I can see that, then we can proceed in putting the cement plug in there, pulling everything out, and then repair the skin, and then start building the well back. So that's the report of today.
Does the screen have to be totally cleaned before we could do that?
Uh, no, uh, with the sonar jet, that was done, it's like a vibration, and it knocks the particles down. Now, how much of it knocked down, I can't tell you until, I haven't seen it.
You can.
Yes. I'm hoping that we can recover a hundred percent. I'm hoping that we can recover 100% of it. But we could recover maybe 80%. So at this point, I can't tell you.
And 80% is still applicable?
Yes. Yes, even at 70% still applicable.
And how much percentage applicable?
Okay, say, say.
Say you get 70%.
Okay, we probably get about 150 gallons per minute.
Which would be what percentage?
There would be like 20%. From the, when the well is brand new and installed, the well was to produce 1,200 gallons per minute. But this is an older well. So the thing that we have to do is make sure that where we go forward and all the equipment that we put in there, we're gonna work. We're working with Ms. Turner to come up with a maintenance process from all the wells and be able to be proactive to look at the wells within five years' time. Take the well out of commission, get a camera, go down there and see the status of it. And then proceed if we have to do what we did to Plaza on the other ones. But as of right now, the other ones are running well. There's no lack of water in the city. Not at all. There's been things said on the B well, well, it's on demand anyway. And you got a high demand, the booster pumps are gonna run. When the beef goes down, then you start seeing the alternation. I just wanna make it clear that there is no water shortage here for the city.
What percentages of B well are running right now?
Right now, it's back to cycling. We're running about maybe 20 hours every other day. Today's reading ran for 10.
And the hospital one?
The hospital is still.
24/7 or what?
Yeah, it's still alternating at that one's time.
But keeping up?
Oh, yes, both of them are keeping up.
Have you put on the third pump yet on B?
I'm in the process of putting the scope together, because it's not only putting the motor. I gotta build the brackets. I gotta measure the piping. Elgin has the two 20 horsepower. Matter of fact, the gentleman called me today. He's gonna have to replace the seal and some bearings in it. But the motors are in good shape. We just gotta replace some of the seals that were in the motor that had been sitting there for many years. But the motors is good. He did tell me that motor's good. The rewound, and he's just putting the finishing touches. I should have had the motor back, mind you.
Did you say good, that the motor's been checked?
Yes, 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 yes. So that'll save us anywhere from $5,000 to $7,000.
Can anyone else have any questions?
Just like a question. Ms. Turner, you know how the conversation, you have spoke to the staff in reference to, you know, this situation with the network hits and happens with the water well. And then, you know, as far as our NIB funds, you know, to fix these things, there are plenty of funds in the water and sewer fund to take care of these things and get the department heads knowing that these funds are available, so we don't run into this problem. Don't be a disaster. I know you're working on a maintenance plan, but you're specifically from network.
Yes, we neglect. And we need to be able to maintain our records at a better level. So we're going backwards. We're gonna go to the company's去年, I believe, Jim Knox?
Yes.
Jim Knox, the other company to go back and maintain their records that we paid previously, to see if there's something that we missed because we don't have in here, and to start a maintenance program. So everything will be in the cycle to go forward to make it do that. Also, working with Innes, he is now going to be part of the cycle to receive inspections. Once we receive them, so they won't go to some box or someplace that we can take care of yet. I think if nothing else, this issue brought it to the forefront that we can address this as soon as possible and get it on a maintenance rotation. And hopefully, once the motor has been certified to be installed, Phelps has already identified that there's enough power there to put it up. So it's just a matter of having it back once it's certified, providing a forefront, a platform, and then right here in your area, by you, to be able to install that by force. Phelps has given to us and writing that there is enough power there to be that Phelps motor.
Any questions?
Any citizen comments on that? Or any other questions on what is reported? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I do have a citizen's comment that we were allowed to make after Henrietta's review.
Anybody.
Okay. And it wasn't all for. What I appreciate, and I've done many reviews, and I'm sure some of you have also done quite a few. The constructive criticism that was offered, along with the excellent points that Henrietta has done in her performance, were well done. However, when it came to Mrs. Castillo, not one, not one positive remark did she have. It was a decimation of Henrietta. I don't understand that. Everybody has good points, everybody has bad points. I do appreciate you addressing what you wrote on Facebook. However, that snide remark perhaps should not have been put in print. You still sit on city council, she is still our city manager, and it was completely inappropriate. Thank you. And you do not live in the city. No, I do not live in the city, but what you do regarding the businesses, what you do regarding having the hospital be in good order with their water, HEB, it affects all of us that come to this city.
Thank you. I just want to say to those that are present and to any of your friends or relatives, I want to thank you for being a part of this community in this county. And you do have a say, whether you live in the city or you don't. I appreciate that. Again, everybody has a right to their own opinion. We do not have to all agree to it. But please, and thank y'all for allowing people to speak, because whether they live in Florisville or not, it's still in our county, we are still connected. We are still trying to do good for our kids, for our relatives, and for all extended family members. So please continue to invite input, whether we all agree or not. Let's just learn to disagree as well in a professional manner. And keep moving forward as we have done and what you have done in the past. And I thank you for that, and I appreciate you letting me speak tonight. Thank you.
And if I may add to that, city or county, we're all family.
Yes.
With that, we're gonna go ahead and go on to item 5A.
I'm sorry, we wanted to, 5A for Councilman Morones. We wanted to give Councilman Morones an opportunity to say goodbye to the council as well, to the public, but we also wanted to give him a recognition for six and a half years of dedication of service to the city of Florisville. I wanted to make this presentation.
You want to put one of the agendas so that if you wanted to have any words that you could speak in this town and be heard too?
A lot of members have some words.
I don't have too many words, but I got about three pages. Now, I wanna thank God first of all. Everything was possible to God. Everything I went through, it's kinda hard to come here and to vote no or to vote yes. It's hard. It's easy said out there, "How can they do this? And how can they do that?" I encourage anybody out there, in the next election, get involved, run for city council, and try to make a difference. But out there, you know, you get all the criticism. You say, "Why did they do this? Why did they do that?" I would encourage people to get more involved and run for council. This five councilmen running, that's what we ought to have. Five running for mayor, that's what we ought to have. But it seems like the people are out there, but they're easy to criticize. And I'm not talking bad about any one of y'all. I'm just saying that get involved with the city of Florisville. And I also wanna thank all my supporters, the 1,217 voters. They say, "Well, you have 1,217 because nobody ran against you." But it takes a little pins for to say, "I'm voting for Morones." I've seen people unopposed get 648, 700. But I thank all those supporters, and the people that weren't able to vote, I thank them too. You know? And I wanna thank Mr. Jota Hala. Mr. Jota Hala is like a father to me. That man said, "You're gonna have a recall on the last time." He said, "You're gonna have a recall. I wanna, whatever you need, I'm here for you." And not only he said that, a bunch of other people said, "We got your back, Mario." That's when I did that lawsuit. I was through. I told you, "I'm done. They voted me out, I don't want no more." But he said, "What's right is right, and go for it." And it came out okay. I wanna thank everybody that was involved with the money, with whatever it took to give me that lawsuit. You know? They gave me four more years of, you know. But anyways, I wanna thank my supporters down at Castles Frazers. I do drink at Castles Frazers occasionally. Those guys were drinking one day, six years, six and a half years ago. And my friend Roland Castro, Tony Zerontas, and my good buddy that passed away, Roy Ramirez, said, "Hey, just run, man, run." I said, "Run for what?" I said, "Run for city council." So I made signs in T-shirts. I made a little sign and put it in front of Castles Frazers. Everybody started saying, "Hey, Mario, I support you, I support you." So I wanna thank everybody at Castles Frazers, all the families and relatives. And then I also wanna thank my mom, Maria Barrera. I don't know why, son. You get involved in this election. I don't want no power, but I know she worked on the ground. And my mom, she's like, "Oh, hey, can you go vote for my son?" I guess everybody owes my mom, Maria. She's kinda not at all the restaurant, just like I am. But anyway, I wanna thank my mom. I also wanna thank my wonderful wife, that, you know, she goes, gets her friends, and go vote for my husband, and pleads this. I don't know. You know, I wanna thank my wonderful wife that, you know, puts up and says, "I gotta go to the council meeting." She said, "Now what? I come with my blood pressure or whatever." And I went, "Nothing, don't worry about it." Tell me, tell me what happened? I said, "Nothing happened." So I eat it. But I wanna thank her. That's why I took a little break in between here, because I think I will be back because my supporters wanted me to run for a higher office. And I said, "No, I'm done." She said, "You need to, you need to." I go to HEB and say, "You need to run." So maybe in two years, four years, I might run for a higher office. But I wanna thank everybody. I wanna also thank my uncle Steve Guerrero, my kids, my sisters, my brothers, all my family and friends for the three terms. And let me see, what else I got here? My favorite councilman, Diana Rainhento. You're the last one here. Anyways, to all the city and county officials that work with me hand to hand also. And wish the best to all the city employees that, you know, everybody, you know, can get along, the police department. What else? I kinda wrote some notes. I don't know how to write and read. Supposedly, they said back when I ran, but I read a little bit and I write a little bit. To the media too. Wilson County News, that they put the stories out there so the people can listen to, with a videotape there. And then again, I apologize to my supporters that I couldn't run for a higher office this time. That a lot of people encouraged me, but I'm sorry, I might do it later on. All right, I guess that's it. My mission, wishing the best to the council, to Henrietta, to city secretary, to the attorneys, to everybody, to the mayor, my friend Castillo. I wanna wish everybody happy holidays. And I want everybody to, you know, like, get involved. And God bless all of y'all and your family. And thank you for supporting me for these six and a half years. And I'm taking my little sign. Everybody was looking at me. What are you taking? Little memories of, you know? I don't know what it cost the city, but, you know, pay your way. And thank you for that.
I'm wearing that redskin jacket.
I said, "I have to wear this jacket now." I said, "Now, all my cowboy fans, my friends that are cowboy fans," he said, "I would lose the vote if I would wear it during my, you know, my term, so now I can wear it." Oh, he was wearing the redskin. I went and voted for it. But anyway, thank you.
All right, I just wanna make the announcement here. After consultation with legal counsel, the mayor is elected to remove herself from the position of presiding officer for the purpose of the canvas in order to avoid any potential or appearance of any conflict of interest. So for the purposes of item 4A, which we're moving on to next, this agenda, Mayor Proten Berro, she'll be the presiding officer.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is 4A, New Business. Consideration in action to canvas to emulate the official returns of the general election held in the city of Florisville, Texas Okay, under the mayor, Diana Garza got 759 votes, which was 68.94%. Tom Robes received 342 votes, which was 31.06%. Also, member of place one, Daniel Enthahada, got 493 votes, at 43.67%. Harry Grove, 418 votes, which is 37.02%. Frank S. Ramirez, 218 votes, at 19.31%. And council member of place two, Juan Ortiz, received 800, which was up to 100% of votes.
There are motions to accept tabulation of return to the early election.
Make a motion to canvas and tabulate the official returns of the general election held in the city of
Make a motion to canvas and tabulate the official return of the general election held in the city of Florisville, Texas on November 4th, 2014.
Is there a second?
A second is...
Motion ready by Christianito. Seconded by Councilwoman Steel, all in favor?
Aye.
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 On both. Motion carries five zero, four zero. Do you want to call me?
Okay, so we're gonna do item four B, consideration in action to approve a resolution declaring the results of the general election held in the city of Florisville, Texas on November the 4th, 2014. Before we do that, do we have any citizens' comments on that? Okay.